Okay, this marks the recording of the March 25th, 2024 special meeting of the Fair TV Commission. David Craft, Chairperson here, along with Paula Coza, Lee Hamlet, Luke Altieri, Will Ferguson, and I hope I'm gonna say it right for the first time Suzanne Titel.
Yep, you got it.
Wow, okay, that would make me one for two. Tonight, good, well, on that note, welcome Suzanne, I'm glad we could do this meeting with you. We've waited quite a while, it seems to have a fifth member. So, thank you for your service and participating in our lovely little group here.
Thank you.
Paula, I don't remember the last time we had a full committee, but no pressure anybody, but nobody can leave the committee for at least a few months. Said with a wink and a smile, but it is nice to have a full committee, we always appreciate everybody's input, obviously, and you know, different, same or otherwise. Opening remarks. Before I turn over to Paula, the RTM budget meetings are imminently scheduled as in tomorrow night. The plan previously was for Luke and myself to attend in person, the Fair TV portion of it. The order switched, which I guess is common. So, I don't know how much of this will be on, you know, WebEx slash in person, but I do have a bedtime in mind, Luke, I don't know how long these things usually go, but you know, I'm somewhere.
I mean, I could just tell you from the last few Board of Finance meetings. I mean, last one went to 1:00 AM, so that's, I mean, I don't know if this is the follow-up one, so maybe it's gonna be shorter, but again, I mean, they might have, you know, the ones I've seen with two items lasted, you know, six hours, and the ones that have 10 items last an hour, so it's not always based on the item itself, you know.
Okay, well, in any event, we've talked at length about the budget, I think. You know, everybody, obviously Suzanne, this is new to you, but we've submitted a budget. The quick story is that we're awaiting this grant to presumably come in, a grant that we've gotten in the past. This is really the first go-around for a lot of us, including myself as Chairperson, where we're actually having the meetings, Luke has been on board for, what, six, nine months now? So, obviously, your first go-around, and proper introductions. Paula's been serving longer than me, I think, but not by a long shot. She's the Vice Chairperson, Will, who you see is the Secretary, Lee's a Commissioner. Those are, you know, titles, I don't think they really mean anything. The way we usually go about things is just kind of go around the chain, right? And just when there's something to do or be assigned, we just kind of take turns and if anybody wants to do something or has a natural inclination, you know, sort of experience level or just curiosity slash enthusiasm, that kind of wins the day. There hasn't been much, but you know, last summer, we were certainly quite busy with, you know, various matters, and things have been going really smooth, thanks largely, I want to say to everybody, but namely to Luke, who's in nine short months has stabilized our, you know, our process of recording these meetings, buttoning up our website, the YouTube pages. That's just two major pillars of what he does, and I won't go into all that tonight. But yeah, we're in a fairly good place, but we need to know if the town will approve our requested budget. Luke, do you want to, before, again, we sort of hop around, because this is, this certainly isn't new business, do you have anything to sort of add to that? You can do it in your reports, but as long as we're on the subject.
Nothing new as far as the grant stuff goes, still kind of waiting here and see what they come back with, but I think April's the deadline for that, so.
Okay, and Lee, what we'll cover off the meeting you attended with respect to grants shortly, maybe that's more of a new business item. But that's really it, as far as an overview goes, we have our first of what I think will be two meetings, it could be more, again, a little bit new to this budget process, we have met with the town, proposed their budget, they know what we want to do. I think overall, our spending is down, which is something that's, you know, the town government is, you know, something to be proud of, but we are relying on this grant, because we've gotten it in the past, and that will be able to, you know, enable the town's participation or town's budget to come in less than last year, right Luke?
Yeah, so if the grant does pick up the cost of the server, then it should be down, I think it was maybe like 20 grand or something from last year. I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, but it definitely was down a significant amount.
So, my final word here is I'd like to think we're doing more with less. But again, a lot of credit to you Luke, so. All over to you, anything on your mind?
So, the only thing that I had to ask was the question about the email that we got from Jen Carpenter talking about April 8th as a meeting, is that what you're saying David, that's a subsequent?
So, that, I could kind of talk on that, so the budget goes through three steps, it seems like, so we propose it, then it goes to the Board of Selectmen, then it goes to the Board of Finance, and then it goes to the RTM for the final approval. So, it's on Board of Finance now, Frank, he basically proposed it at the Board of Selectmen, it got approved. The Board of Finance is tomorrow, but I think they said they had a couple of questions for us, so that's why they're having us come in on it. Normally, it seems like it might just go, might just pass without needing us there, but I guess they had a couple of questions. I don't know if that's because we're new, and maybe they just want to kind of pick our brains, or if it's, that's just standard procedure.
Frank didn't allude to what they were, or anything?
Um, I mean, I watched it, he kind of touched on it pretty good, I mean, I think he covered it pretty well, I mean, honestly, again, I thought he covered everything, and there's nothing that, nothing else that we could have said, but again, it's a different board, so maybe they wanted to hear something else. And then the April 8th one that you saw, that's the RTM section of it. So, that's the next round of budgets.
And so, David, are you able to go to that meeting on the 8th?
The 8th, which is a...
It's a Monday.
Monday, yep.
Right. I don't know. Are you able to?
I mean, right now, I'm supposed to fly back to London on that day.
Right.
So, but I don't have, it's not set in stone yet, so that's, I'm a big question mark for it.
Sure.
That one too, I mean, I might, I'll just mention it, because she sent out the rough agenda for that. And like Dave said, with that one, we were kind of at the bottom of the list, so I don't know, again, I don't know how long the RTM ones go, because I haven't been here for one yet, but if they go anything like Board of Finance, it might be a late night. They did say we could join via WebEx, I don't know, I mean, that might help a little bit, but still, just a little bit of a heads up.
Obviously, if anybody wants to go and willing to deal with that, I'm not surprised, I don't see a show of hands, it's a Monday night and it's late. So, let's just get through.
Whatever you want, if you want me to, I mean, I could probably pop in on WebEx.
Let's just see how tomorrow goes, I mean, I would like to be on it tomorrow night, but if this gets, if this just gets to be an unwieldy time, then you know, we'll have to deal with it, I mean, I'd like to try and do tomorrow night and go from there, I want to see what the matters are, if any.
Did they ever get back to you when you asked about moving it to the first gen item?
No, and I realize not everybody can be first, but we're already basically at the end of the second one, and we were supposed to be first up, and that was what I was banking on to be there, but.
Because she did say, when she first asked us to go, she said that we're first on the list, you know?
I know, and then she said it's subject to change, I'm sure these things move around all the time for gosh knows what, and everybody wants to be, you know, first, but I'll drop a quick note to, you know, when we're off of this call to the Board of Finance person who has copied, I don't recall the name.
I think Lori.
Lori, yeah, and I'll just ask for a status update, but, you know, I don't, you know, look, I mean, you know Suzanne, this is a good example, like, we want, we're diligent, we want to be on top of it, we're obviously all volunteers, I mean, Luke is employed, but you know, this is this is just not assumed that anybody can, you know, be sitting in a meeting at 11 o'clock at night waiting their turn, you know, at midnight or whatever it is, and maybe I'm over-exaggerating, and it's not that bad. Lee, do you have any experience with how long this goes?
No, I was just gonna say, available on the 8th, but it should be helpful to know what they're, what they want to know.
Right, like, I could hop on a WebEx on that Monday too, but I don't have any knowledge. I mean, that's sort of how we are.
Let's see how tomorrow night goes, I'm quite happy for someone else to do it, and I just at a certain point tomorrow night, I don't know, you know, we'll just see, but I'd like to just be on it, at least be aware of it, and if they can put, move the time up, I'll actually go, as was the plan.
Were there, were there, were there questions raised when you met with the Board of Selectmen?
No, they didn't mention anything, I kind of tuned in on that section, and they said, they just asked, I think they just kind of asked about the whole broadcast server, and then Frank explained how we're waiting on the grant. No questions after that, I mean, they just kind of gave us a kind of pat on the back and said, you know, they appreciate everything we're doing, all that. But no, not one like concern or anything, really. So, I'm just kind of, like you said, confused why all of a sudden there's questions, but.
Well, like I said, I'm willing to represent us on the 8th, maybe you get a sense of things from the Board of Finance, it's hard to believe that their questions would be any different than the RTMs, I wouldn't think, but I don't know.
So, then, so just going back to my remarks, should I respond to Jen Carpenter that Lee is gonna represent us on the 8th? Because she left the question asking, so that's why I brought it up, is because she's sent another email asking who's, who from this commission's gonna appear and represent Fair TV at that meeting on the 8th. David, is that, do you want me to do that? Should I just send a note saying that Lee is gonna represent, and then based on what you and Luke hear about tomorrow, you can fill him in?
You're buying this on a flyer, you understand.
Can you still hear me okay?
Yep.
If I go out, and Paula bump it over to you, because every time I do something with the WebEx, for some reason, distorts the audio, but I don't want to hold this up anymore. Do you resolve, or did you finish your comments? I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
Oh, so no, I just asked you if you wanted me to respond to Jen to let her know that Lee is gonna represent us on the 8th, on April 8th. He can't hear us, okay, so I'm gonna make the decision as the Vice Chairman, Vice Chairperson, that I am going to send a note back responding to Jen's email and just letting her know, Lee, that you will be there, and we will not send you into that meeting with no information. Obviously, we'll get, we'll get some information and make sure that you need going forward.
Yeah, maybe pick something up tomorrow night Luke, that might give us a clue.
Yeah, of course, yeah, I see, I mean, I guess I could try to make it as well, I mean, it might be helpful if we're both there.
Yes, for sure.
Especially if it's over WebEx, I mean, you know, again, I don't know if I can stay up till 1:00 AM and then get up at, you know, 6:00 in the morning the next day.
It's good practice for the baby. Yeah, what I suspect, if you just want somebody from each entity to be available in case there's a question, that would be my guess. And I can, I can sit mute just as well as anybody else.
Perfect, thank you, that's great. Okay, that's the end of my remarks. I don't have the agenda in front of me, but.
Over to you, Will.
That goes to me, yeah. I have nothing, just to make a motion to approve the minutes from our February meeting, which was dated, forgive me, February 21st.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie's unanimously. That's it for me, just not part of my report, but just as we get to new business, I didn't see it on the agenda, but there was the request for the legendary teachers' recording that came through from the Ward Librarian, it was in my junk box. So, I'm guessing same alias issues we always have. So, let's just make sure we get to that, and in terms of things we want to cover slash post.
Just take a moment here, Suzanne, we created for the first time, to my knowledge, a alias, Fair TV Commission. But however it was set up, it doesn't always, you know, we need to add your name to it and your email, which I can have the town IT person do, but it's really quirky, it doesn't it doesn't always come into your inbox. And particularly if you, if it's, I was, it was explained to me that if someone sees the commission, it's likely to go to junk mail, but how would they ever know that? But if you're ever writing to us as a group, just to cut to the chase, just list our emails all separately, and there should be no issue.
Okay.
I'll get you added, even though, again, but if anything comes in in the meantime, Will, I did not know of that request, because again, it went to junk. Maybe we can just bump that over to new business.
Yeah, I can, I can brief everyone in, based on Aaron's email, when we get there.
Yeah, so I, and Luke, I was trying to minimize my screen to email Lori and Jen while we were on this call, but for whatever reason, that's when the audio issue starts, I'm not touching my screen for the rest of this call, so I'll have to get back to you on you know, what's going on tomorrow night, but
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll figure this out, let's just not even worry about it, I mean, ideally, we can both have some presence there, and if not, we'll figure it out, but someone will be on, I'll make sure of that, and then we'll go from, to April 8th. Looks like we have an interested party. Hello? Rare for us. Anyway, so I think that wraps up the Chairperson's comments, actually, Lee, we'll just move, let's talk about the, do you want to just go into the the grant meeting, the CAC meeting now?
Sure, so, the good news, or the bad news, depending on how you look at it, is the meeting last Thursday was canceled because they couldn't get a quorum. But, so, can I take five minutes to talk about this council, because it's kind of a nightmare? I don't know how much you all know about this, the Cable Access Council area too, that we're part of. The cable companies are required to pony up $100,000, it's supposed to be divided up among the six members of the the council, which includes us, Bridgeport, Milford, Orange, and Woodbridge. And in the past, we've had to write a grant proposal, then they, the council meets and they approve or disapprove, whatever the the grant request is, and then you have to write a report on how you spent the money. It's not exactly state money, because it's from the cable companies, but it's mandated by state statute that they pony up this money. So, first of all, we have no representation on the council at the moment, it used to be Jerry and Tom Flynn, they have obviously since left. So, we have nobody on the council, we're actually entitled to have four members on the council, one from the Board of Education, one from the libraries, one from us, and then, and then a non-voting member who knows all about the system, which would presumably be Luke or somebody else. So, anyway, David asked me to sit in on the meeting, and I got an agenda, and the agenda says that they're proposing a change in the way the grants are being rendered, that instead of everybody applying for the grant and being approved or not, they just want to divide it, divide it up five, they said five ways, it has to be six ways. And so, essentially, you would be given $16,600, and you can spend it, and then write up a report that says, this is how I spent it, which struck me as being kind of odd. And part of the problem is that, you know, I asked for, can you, can you give me the reasoning behind this, and basically, this is what Ron Davis, the Chairman of the Council, wants to do. Now, maybe that because they don't have enough members attending these meetings, that's the only way they can do this, although, the Vice Chair of the Council said, this would just make her life easier if we did it this way, which also strikes me as being kind of odd. I don't know if I mentioned that the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Council are both from Orange, which strikes me as being a flagrant conflict of interest. So, it's all sort of loosey-goosey, and, and, you know, I don't, I talked to Terry Brown, and Luke suggested I talk to Terry Brown, who oversees grants for the town, who said, well, you know, why is it being divided equally when, you know, smaller communities have presumably less needs than larger communities, for all sorts of reasons. You know, that just, if you just divide it up and say, here's the money, even I could write a, you know, say, we should go buy 10 cameras, and I could write a justification for it and probably get it. Now, this may be all, I may be making much ado about nothing, because again, it's not taxpayer money, it comes from the cable companies, but still, this all strikes me as being quite odd. So, you know, I don't know what we all think about this. You know, we, like I said, we don't have a presentation on the council as it is, I was just going to listen. They're supposed to have a, you know, a new date for the meeting, but I don't know when that's gonna happen, and they're very prone to announcing meetings with little or no you know, time to plan it, that's sort of the way it goes, so, that's my report.
Yeah, I mean, Lee, I had, I think, when I first joined the commission, I think I had been tasked with looking into this as well, and I kind of discovered the same thing without attending a meeting. The website hadn't been updated in six or seven years, there's no listing of anyone attending, no one else in the town is aware of it, despite the fact that we have the four, aforementioned seats allocated to us. So, there does seem to be a bit of disarray, and, you know, but at the same time, there is money available, right? And I tend to agree, I tend to agree with you that carving it equally six ways, because it makes someone's life easier, is not an appropriate use of funding, and while it's not taxpayer money, it is money that is set aside to benefit the taxpayers, and so in some way, like, I view, like, and I'm sure you agree, like, I view it as taxpayer money or resources, right, that should be made available. And just cutting it in sixes, because it lets someone get to the bar an hour earlier, it doesn't really like, do it for me, I agree, if we're gonna keep it simple, then let's go head count by district and divide it that way, or, you know, town total budgets by district, or landmass, or something of, you know, let's at least pretend as a, as a state to put some effort into it beyond divide by number of districts, would be my like counter to to the Chairman.
Yeah, that, that's sort of the way I feel, I mean, why should, why should why should Orange, which has, I think, a fourth of the population of Fairfield, get the same amount of money? That just doesn't make sense, you, just by definition, their needs cannot be as great as a larger community. They probably have less places to meet, they probably cover less meetings. That doesn't make sense to me, and what happens if we need more than the 16,000? We're precluded from getting that, because I guarantee you, the other places will find ways to spend the money, if given the chance, that's how, that's, that's how budgets work.
Yeah, and, and my selfish interest as a traditional conservative is to undo our burden on the taxpayers of Fairfield as much as possible to do what we are set out to do. And if we can secure money that is coming from a cable company and continue to embark on our race to the bottom of the budget, so David and Luke can stand in front of the town and say, we are doing more, more efficiently with less of the taxpayer dollars. You know, I'm personally motivated to do so, so yeah, I'm in agreement, like, I'd love it would be worth it to me to make the fight to get 16.7 over 16.6, if that's, you know, if that's what it takes, and yeah, like, again, if someone has the argument that, well, you know, there are certain fixed costs, and so Orange would require the same amount of, you know, funding to maintain, fine, someone's gotta make that argument though, and until that.
Right, right.
You know, we got more people to serve here.
Terry Brown, the more we talked about it, was, was really, I don't know, we're up about, this just doesn't make any sense.
So, how do we, and don't let me cut anyone else off if they have a differing opinion or feel the need to voice support, but so how do we stay ahead of the next meeting? It sounds like you said they announced the meetings rather rapidly.
Well.
Yeah, with a week's notice.
Well, in fairness, I went through the bylaws of the, of the of the council, and it does say, they meet on the, traditionally meet on the, like, the third Thursday of March. But it's, you know, I wouldn't have known.
Check their website, I heard it's up to date.
They haven't met in forever too, anyway, I mean, I just, I just get nervous if they're just shoving this meeting at us. All the more reason, everything you say Luke, or Lee, if you cannot attend, because the first question I asked is, WebEx, you know, Google Meet, whatever, and Zoom, and they said no, or no one even responded.
Yeah, well, they spotted me, and they said they lost the password for the Zoom meeting, and I thought Zoom meetings aren't that hard to set up, even I could do that.
Google meets for free. Half hour, 45, anyway, that's, it's obviously, I just want to make sure we, when that meeting is rescheduled, Lee, like, if you can't do it, and appreciate you being willing to go up to Orange on short notice, because you know, given what you just said, I think it's crucial that somebody be able to go up there, hopefully.
What also sounds like we need to get our representatives from Fairfield, like, to start to show up to these things, instead of it just being like one person from the Fair TV Commission showing up.
Let's see, I had a list of the others, I think Bridgeport, Stratford, and Milford, I think, don't have, no, I think Bridgeport and Stratford and Fairfield have no representation on the council. And I, at some point, somebody had said something about this Ron Davis, that he was kind of difficult to work with, but just because he's Chairman of the council, and given the power to declare, well, we're gonna change the way we do applications. I will add, though, that in careful reading of the statute, the statute says the councils can decide among themselves how they want to distribute the money, there's no, there's no guidance in the statute for how this is supposed to work, so it's, it's so loosey-goosey, it's kind of strange.
Which I think explains why no one is showing up, right, for for relatively small budget, and a poorly run, it's, or maybe not poorly run, but a difficult to navigate organization.
Yeah.
With not a lot of money on the line, it's understandable why we haven't had people from Board of Finance and RTM jumping at the opportunity.
If none of us knew about it or responded, like, what would they, what would they do with the money? Would a check just come into the town? Luke, this was the one where the check was mailed to me at the town, right?
Yep, it just.
That money had been applied for, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Listen, I, assuming I could. Listen, I, I, assuming I could go, I, I can go to this meeting, I think. This is going to sound weird, but I think you have to designate, designate me as the representative so I can vote. Because I don't think I could have voted if they actually had the meeting. I saw that, Will. Look, I'm not looking for things to do. I got plenty of things to do, but I think one of us has to go.
Can we designate two people?
Pardon me?
Can we designate two people, A, in case you can't go, and B. Since the town has four allocations, I don't know if the bylaws say who they have to be, but I mean.
They do.
They do.
Come from, one has to come from the Board of Education, one has to come, but does not have to be a Board of Education member. They can represent the Board of Education, one can come from the Library Board, and they have to be a member of the Library Board. And then there's a non-voting member, which I'm, I'm pretty sure that must have been what Jerry was because. The, the non-voting member can't be an employee of us.
Cannot be?
Cannot be, to be a non-voting member, I mean, Luke could not vote. He can, he can represent the town. And you can go to a meeting, but he can't vote.
Well.
But I, I wonder too if Luke's, Luke is different than Jerry because Luke is an actual employee of the town in a separate capacity.
Bylaws, the bylaws say.
It's pretty explicit, David, like, I think.
Luke, but Luke's not an employee of the town. He's an independent contractor, right?
No, but the other, my other job, it'd be the Board of Ed.
Oh, oh, of course.
Yeah, so that's. Well, I don't think that's the issue. The action, the issue is, I mean, I, I find the statute, but it pretty much says, but that they're. Their bylaws, which are amazingly intricate for an organization that's so all over the map. Their bylaws say that something about one of the, one of the, trying to find, one of the. Members, the non-voting member cannot work for, be employed by the, the. By us. Now, if he's an independent contractor, you could. This is so loosey goosey, I'm sure we'll be fine, but, but the bylaws are specified.
Sorry, just to go back to this, because I think this is important, and we'll, we'll, we'll cover these, you know, meeting requests in short order. If, if it wasn't Luke for argument's sake and it was, you know, Paula Will or Suzanne, or me. That, that doesn't fly either because that, you can't have two people from Fair TV.
Yeah, well, I, I'm sorry, I don't have the bylaws in front of me.
Right, unless we, unless we nominate two people. You know, and say you're co-representatives and therefore you're interchangeable, right?
Well, you can, you can do that. I, I think the, the issue is. Yes, but you can only have one person.
Yeah.
At the meeting. Lord knows both of us wouldn't want to go anyway, but, but you can only have one person representing Fair TV at the meeting to vote.
But do we, I mean, I don't think anybody, look, I, I'm guessing that this is not going to be parsed. As far as our process goes in nominating, you know, somebody, but I think since we are meeting here, we should just formalize it. Try to do it according to the letter and the spirit of, of this, these bylaws. And nominate two representatives from Fair TV, you know, to be our CAC. Spokespeople from the town of Fairfield. Lee, since you've obviously put the time in, I certainly, you know, deserve first tips if you consider that even in, in honor. A privilege, and then if you can't do it, then at least we can.
I get first right to refusal too?
Yeah, that's what I was looking to say. And then simply put, somebody, if, if you can't do it or whatever. Then somebody else can just go in official capacity as Fair TV representative. I wouldn't even know the fact that they, involving the library and the Board of Ed is so, the whole thing is so puzzling to me why those. You know, why those entities, I, I'm not even sure I understand. But that's neither here nor there. I just wish that we would get more representation as a town.
I mean, somebody would have to make the, the Board of Education and the Library Board aware that they can.
My only, my only reluctance to having Luke, to having Luke do it, I mean, I guess it doesn't hurt that. Oops, to have, to nominate him formally now as a, you know, a non-voting member, just so we can. Check that box, but I'd rather just, I just want to make sure that the people who are there have, you know, some actual say. You know, voting wise.
I just, before we do anything. And this is one of the things I think, and so I dropped the link to the bylaws in the chat. Isn't, I don't believe it's in our power to appoint anybody. It says that the chief elected official in each town of the franchise shall appoint one or more members who are residents. And so this, this would fall on Bill Gerber to appoint. One or more members based on our town population, and so. I think because of our population, we either get like three or four. And again, and, and we can, we can all break away and read into this. We'll also do this tonight and then come back to the next meeting maybe with our. Questions or send them to Lee, but the way that I'm reading it is that. Chief like official shall point one or more members based on the census and based on the census, I think we would get four members. And then in addition to that, the Board of Education in each town, they'll point one additional member who's not part. And then an additional member from the libraries who must be on that board, and so. You know, the town of Fairfield could potentially have as many as six people actively involved in this council, the way that I'm reading it. At the lowest case scenario, based on our population, it's four people. If it's four people plus Ed and libraries, it's now six people. And this is a Bill Gerber task, not a Fair TV Commission task. To appoint, so I think this is one of those things where we might have to.
Be right. It's not, it's not written very clearly.
It's not clear.
This is what I suggest, that we don't belabor this much longer, because what I'm afraid of is. That I'll get this note from Marlene that says, we're meeting next Tuesday. So, I think, David, I had a quick note from you to Bill. And saying, you know, we need to designate somebody for the CAC, Lee Calvert. We recommend Lee Calvert. Can you make that happen so that at least we have a vote on, on this? And we can sort the other stuff out later.
Okay.
I would just feel better if, if I had some imprimatur to do it. I didn't feel like I did going into that meeting.
So we shouldn't, as a committee, we should or shouldn't nominate you since it's the first, it's Bill Gerber's decision.
And it doesn't matter, while you can, but it doesn't really matter.
Okay, so I'll just.
You, you can make your suggestion to Bill as the Fair TV.
You on that note, Lee, so we're, and I'll add his, I'll add Christine. As chief of staff, so hopefully can get their attention. Well, well, I'm sorry, would you mind, because I don't want to open a link, would you mind sticking that in? When we're done, I'm going to super quick email. I just don't want to lose track of it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll include it in the minutes also, so it's easily.
And I'll, I'll get that note off to him. Luke, by the way, I, I sent a note off to Lori from my phone. Interest of time, Lee, are you good?
Sorry, I didn't mean to take so long.
No, I'm, I'm really glad you did and really appreciative. And I think it's important because we want to make sure we can capture and continue to capture those funds and. And hopefully maximize the opportunity, you know, in, you know, in a fair and just way. Let's move over to Luke's manager report.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have too much this month to talk about. The only update I do have on the Zoom room at the Board of Ed is that it sounds like the equipment is in and they want to. Start going on April break, as that's the time where there's no meetings or anything and the rooms are open. So hopefully that is done by the end of April break, but again, I don't know if they're planning to be done or what, but at least they're going to be. Seems like they're going to be starting then. I mean, other than that, I mean, the other, the other thing was the request that came in for their coverage, but I think. We're talking about that in the next section. So it's, if anyone has any questions, if not, that's pretty much it for me.
Luke, you must be doing something right. I haven't heard from my neighbor for ten weeks.
Maybe he's on vacation.
Yeah, we, I think we've kind of squared away a lot of the sound issues. I know they finally started using their Zoom room, how it's supposed to be used at. Was it Town Hall? So any of the board of selectmen meetings are used via Zoom in the Zoom room. So the audio sounds a little bit better after some fine tuning. Again, Board of Ed, it's still the old setup and Fire Training Station is kind of like a hybrid, so. We'll get, we're getting there to the full Zoom feature and then, and we should be free of all issues, right? So, let's hope.
Yeah.
But yeah, so your neighbor should be a little bit happier soon.
He must be.
Yeah, that's good. Good to know. No news is good news, right?
Suzanne, you can appreciate that in all these meetings, and Luke has made major adjustments, but there's generally. You know, it'd be generous to say a handful of people, maybe one or two people who. Are upset about the inability to, you know, hear a certain part or something and that's what we hear about. But that's okay, it's, goes with the territory.
Exactly, and now I don't know if you, if you're too familiar, but. The, the, basically the town got a grant to install. Like built-in Zoom rooms within a bunch of different venues, so what they basically have is. Wall-mounted cameras, ceiling-mounted microphones, and then speakers all around the room. So a lot of the times, the issues are that they set up the tables and they're super far away from the microphones. And that's just the nature of the beast, like, that no one tells whoever sets up the tables that they have to be underneath the microphone in order to hear. So a lot of times we'll have a meeting and again, they set up the tables wrong, someone's on the other side of the room. They can't hear them and then we hear about it, but again, it's something that the town installed and everything, so we're kind of limited in how much we have. How much say we have in the equipment, but if, kind of, if things are set up properly, then it seems to work pretty well. We kind of saw that in the Board of Selectmen budget sections. They set up the tables, we had to move it after the first half of it, we had to move everything underneath the microphone. But, you know, it seems like it's a little bit better now, so it's just, you know, trial and error with the new equipment. But again, it's just unfortunate because it's nothing that we purchased or had any say in the matter. Matter, it just all, all of a sudden came in, they installed it and it's kind of like, we're kind of rolling with the punches here, so. It's learning curve, but we'll, we'll get there.
All right, let's get, move on to new business. I know there's two items that I can think of to take up. If we're including. Well, the, the last one that you referenced that I don't think any of us saw, but let's start with the League of Women Voters.
Yeah, so that was one that we've covered in the past. It seems like it was always covered. I look back on YouTube and there was always a video and a couple, couple of times a year, it looks like, sounds like they meet. We covered them in the fall, so again, I just kind of a formality kind of thing to throw it up to you guys and just get approved. But it sounds like it's something that we've always covered and. We have the coverage for it and the resources for it, so I, I, you know, I'd say if we could cover it, then that'd be great.
I mean. You know, I, it, it's nice to continue doing what we've been doing, I guess. It just sort of begs the question, is this League of Women Voters? From, you know, the Fairfield League of Women Voters, or is it a larger entity?
Um, I'm not too sure.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's the Fairfield League of Women Voters. They're the same group that does the candidate debates every year.
Okay. I mean, you can obviously imagine why I want to know. I just wanted, and I'm just looking at my notes here. Think it would be good to have that sort of firm, because if it wasn't, then I, it would spark a question in my mind. Anyone else have any thoughts about this pro or con or otherwise?
I think we should.
Yeah, I got, I have no issue covering it. I would just say like the one. Just call up for us keeping back of mind is like. Difference here, the precedent, precedent has been set and it's something we've been covering. But for any other organization to say then we want our meetings covered as well, I just, you know, that's always my. I know I'm a broken record. My concern is always a slippery slope of. This would be secondary content.
Right.
If we, you know, I think particularly because we, you know, because we've done in the past. I'm, you know, I'm going to be in favor of covering it, but it's probably something that we should think. Critically about maybe in the next couple of meetings about what stance we take on secondary content and. Kind of reviewing all the things we have covered, things that are proposed and how we do determine the difference between League of Women Voters. And, you know. The Vietnam Veterans stuff and, and all the other things that come across our plate, I think we just, we probably need to. While it might not be required, it behooves us, I think, to have a. More deliberate kind of set of evaluation rules on how we approve secondary content.
Um, yeah, I mean, we've been, you know, we've sort of came to the conclusion that it's very hard to have a one-size-fits-all policy. But that's not to suggest that we, you know, can do anything we want on a whim. This request is in fact from the Fairfield League of Women Voters from Bryce Perry, the co-president. So, that's certainly a comfort to me because I, you know, I have, I have a problem with it if it's. If it's something with the state or the county or whatever, then that definitely. You know, sets up multiple questions, but I'm in favor of this particular one. So. I make a motion to, are we voting on this? Okay, I make a motion to vote to approve the coverage of Saturday, May eleventh legislative wrap-up by the Fairfield League of Women Voters.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Well, why don't you tee up the other one?
Yes, sorry, just finishing my note on that one. All right, so this other one. Aaron Johnson is the librarian at Fairfield Ward High School. They have a legendary teacher's ceremony that they would like to have aired on Fair TV. It was a celebration that went on hiatus during COVID. But they were able to host the event last December. They already have the recording of the event. And so I don't think this is necessarily something that we're being asked to host live or even put on the channels, but I think this is probably one of those things where we could. Put it onto our YouTube, right, Luke?
Yeah.
Had it, have it live there. So in terms of lift, as far as I can tell, it is as close to zero as we can get. It does, you know.
So did you watch the video by any chance?
I haven't, I'm not, I'm not one for opening other people's Google Drive links.
I didn't either. I just wasn't sure if it, is it like student work or, because like that is a whole nother thing, like, because. We'll have kids sending us their work and it's, you know.
Yeah.
A million schools are going to be sending us saying, oh, you posted this, then you have to post this. That's the only thing we're kind of got to watch out for, you know.
All right, I'm, I'm going to take a risk and I'll, I'll click on it, but my hunch, yeah, okay, so it's. The, the title of the file is Faculty Honor, so I think this is like honoring teachers who have. Again, my hunch, we should probably take a look at the content before. You know, my, my hunch is that this is honoring teachers who have done above and beyond, performed well locally. Sorry, go ahead.
Townwide or just at Ward?
It's a great question.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's something we, you know, and these are questions I can ask back to Aaron. I'm happy to like, to poke, poke, poke on this one a little bit. But presuming that it is at face value, would, you know. Um, but presuming that it is at face value, what, you know, what it appears to be, I think generally speaking, I would be in support of this. It, it seems to meet our mission, it's directly related to education, it's not some kid's history project that they wanted us to film. Um, it feels relevant to our mission and, and what's been set out for us to cover. Um, I don't think we should necessarily vote on it until we've dissected the content a little bit, but, um, but I think it's fair to get a temp check from the rest of the crew, um, if everyone feels like this is something that, again, if it is what it's perceived to be, something we might support, then I, I'm happy to go back to Aaron and, and ask for a little more detail. If anyone's got any concerns, I'd love to, to hear it now, and that way I can um, press Aaron a little bit and make sure we answer any questions.
I mean, do other schools have these ceremonies? That's what I get nervous is, like, if every school then asks to post it, I know it's not a heavy lift to just post a link, but it's like, would that just take over the whole website?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I'm worried about too, is like, we post this and then it's like, well, Ludlow says, well, what about us, and then, you know, Burr, and then it's like, you know, you have fifteen schools sending your stuff weekly, and it basically takes over.
Wanted to know if it was town-wide.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if it was a town-wide honoring all legendary teachers or retired teachers, that would be a lot easier.
Yeah.
To say yes, but if it's just from Ward, I don't, I think that goes down the slippery slope. Fear, Will, that you just mentioned.
Yeah. So how about I respond to Aaron, and, and all that's exactly that, like, just, you know, understanding that we're all volunteers that have professional lives and family lives and all things, can you give me a rundown of the content? What's covered here? What is the purpose of the award? How often does it happen? Is it town-wide or specific to Ward? Um, and then from there, at the next meeting, we can, we can make a decision. Again, this thing happened in December.
Yeah.
Urgency perspective, you know, it's, it's obviously important to, I'm sure a lot of people, we don't want to delay anything, but my urgency on this feels fairly low. Um, we'll get the details on it, if it's something that is like a once a year, covers the town, I think it's a no-brainer. If it's specific to, you know, nine through twelve at Ward, and this happens at every other school, and it's twice a year, and, you know, those types of things, then maybe we reconsider somewhere in the middle, we can have a chat about it. Um, but yeah, I'm all for low hosting costs, low lift from Luke and team, low budget.
Yeah, that's, my other thing too would be like quality of it, quality and like, kind of got to vet the video too, because you know, you don't know what's on there, if there's, you know. So, you know, just basic quality control.
Yeah, I mean, Luke, I think if, if we get the right, if we get the answers to move this along, which Will has done a good job explaining, um, my view is that we should pay, I mean, what, it's one, you're gonna be an hour, you know, maybe two hours of somebody's time, but we should pay one of our folks to sit and watch the entire thing.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Hundred percent.
And not, not post any, and this can all take place, let's just make sure we, I think we decide one way or the other in the next meeting, because you know, there's no reason to let it drag out, so hopefully if, if people get answers and it can be vetted, then, you know, it sounds like this will be, you know, likely to, to come up on our platform. Suzanne, we get, yeah, we, we get a lot of play requests, you know, from mid, the middle schools, elementary schools, and unfortunately, we, we do have to decline them. Um, for the reason.
Don't they have their own websites? I feel like my school's constantly writing.
Yeah, so they do have their own websites and they, they can manage their own sites within the actual school itself.
Um. Just a little, a little wider distribution, I mean, wider publicity.
And, and that is, and that's been our concern, right, is like the, the interpretation of, of interest to the town. Would it be interesting for the town if the star running back got a scholarship at University of Michigan? Probably, be good for the town. Are we supposed to then post his highlight reels on our
Yeah.
page to support that mission for the benefit of the town, and if so, then the volleyball star, track star, hockey star, baseball star.
Just for a context.
Round and round and round we go, right, so.
Is that what the patch is for? Who owns?
I, yeah, you are, you are pulling at strings that you don't want to pull at, ask and answer, yeah. We, uh, we are not a quick reaction force news team, believe it or not, um. People are trying.
Just go, go, Google Fair TV and court trial, and you'll, you'll see some, some, uh, ba- balanced, um, some balanced coverage, some not, but, you know, that gives some color to this topic. Um, you know, when, when I joined, uh, I don't even know how long ago, two, three years ago, you know, at first I was like, oh, like, should put, somebody wrote a poem about, you know, I don't know, about something, I think, to do with Ukraine and, you know, supporting Ukraine, and I was like, what is the harm in doing this? But we, we don't want to just sit here and say no to things, but, um, this, and this has been a subject of intense debate, not so much anymore, but, you know, we do, there is a code. Um, and it lays out very specifically, you know, what things are definitely coverable, and then the rest is up to interpretation. And as a volunteer committee, we try and paint ourselves not to get too immersed in trying to figure out, you know, what else passes the test, so, you know, we've taken a stance pretty unanimously that if, you know, something is so up there and nebulous that, you know, we should really, we're, we're very reluctant to do it, because then, as you said, let, let the request flow.
Yeah.
And we don't really have a leg to stand on, and it's, it's time-consuming to answer them and, and explain to everybody. Um, but we're doing a really good job with these meetings, which is what the purpose of Fair TV is, uh, you know, the primary purpose of it, and, and that's our bread and butter, but, um, yeah, we do have some of these, you know, extra things that classify as secondary content, anyway. Um, okay, so hopefully we'll, we'll, um, have those answers by the next meeting, I think April twenty-first, maybe? Twenty-second? No, it's April fifteenth, it's, that's the third Monday in April. Um, anybody else have any new business?
Paula, have you already sent that note to Jen Carpenter? I may have a, I'm, I have a, I realize I have a conflict on the eighth.
On the eighth?
I can probably reschedule it, but let me, I'll, I'll send you a note.
Okay.
One way or the other.
Sounds good.
All right.
Oh, one thing, Will, did you notice, did you see that they rescheduled that Veterans, um, meeting?
I didn't, um, I know that we talked about it at the last meeting, when did they move it to?
Uh, I think it was end of May, I want to say, uh, just off the top of my head, I think I might have put it in.
They moved it venue too.
Yeah, I think they moved it to Ward, so, you know, it might be something we can talk about, you know, reconsidering.
All right, can we, I mean, maybe let's bring it to the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
If it's end of May, I should give us plenty of time, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get.
And we're set up at Ward, right?
Yeah, I'll get all the details. Yeah, Ward is one of the, uh, you know, preferred locations.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah, um. Well, let's, I guess, David, if we can have that on the agenda for April, um.
Sorry, just say it one more time.
Just the, I think it was the Korean Vietnam War veterans.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So if, if we just add that to the April, uh, agenda, we can talk about covering it for end of May.
Okay, that came up last time, but why didn't we?
Because they got rescheduled.
Okay, okay.
It was supposed to be at Bigelow T Center, and then the, you know, the whole question about the location, and then.
Moved to Ward, okay.
Yeah, and then they rescheduled it, so.
Okay, and it's res, and in theory, it's on a night that we have coverage, and it's at a venue that is, um.
Yeah, I'll have to double-check, um.
Okay.
The coverage part of it, um, you know, as it gets closer and the more meetings get added and whatnot, but, uh, I also need to double-check the schedule, I mean, the dates that they rescheduled it to, so, um.
Yeah.
I'll do all that before the next meeting, so.
Okay, I'm gonna try and get back to the habit of, you know, with the agenda of sending it all to you, um, first, you know, before it goes to the town, because essentially it has to hit the town inbox on the Friday before our Monday meetings, um, in order to, for us to have a legal meeting on Monday nights. Uh, has to be in before the end of the previous business day, so, um, I'll get these out, and that will give everybody a chance to weigh in if there's something we want to talk about, or, or, you know, needs to be on the agenda.
Cool.
All right, um, I think that covers it. Suzanne, do you, as the, we're gonna give you the last word, or I guess technically the second to last one, anything you'd like to add or have questions on?
No.
Are you coming back in April?
Yeah, soaking it all in, you guys are running a good ship here.
We're trying, uh, you know, and again, it's just great to have a, a, a fifth member. Now we can get into some really good philosophical debates and, you know, have some three-two votes, uh.
Yeah, I'll mix it up.
You know, but, um, we don't mind when they're, it, it's, you know, we're, we're, it's good, because we just want to move things forward and you know, keep providing valuable service, so, all right, thanks, everyone. Luke, I'll be in touch, um, about tomorrow night, just stay tuned to your email.
Yeah.
Lee and Paul, um, I know that was when I couldn't hear properly, so, well, just let me know whenever that April eighth thing resolves and, and, um, hopefully we'll have a CAC meeting before we meet the next time, and I'll send a note to Bill Gerber and copy it, Lee.
Okay, thanks. Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, 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 that was coming up, so.
Will adjourn.
I second that, so that concludes the, uh, March twenty-fifth special meeting of the Fair TV Commission. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Have a good night.